You have the gym over on that side of that lane.
Oh, thank you.
When I grow up, I want to be a doctor and I want to be a hairstylist. I want to be a teacher.
Does it trust me?
Guess that then.
In this school, we are working hard to make sure our children have every opportunity.
When I grow up, I want to be a doctor and I want to be a hairstylist. I want to be a teacher. I want to be a marine biologist.
It's so important that we provide academic rigor, but also that social emotional support to build our students' confidence and support their dreams.
I've been really amazed with my experience at Lenore City Schools, all the way down to middle school level and get experience with STEM, which will help prepare us for life.
Within the I-Learn Institute, we provide a high-quality virtual education that offers flexibility and personalized support.
One of the great things about our program here at Lenore City High School is students can find their needs.
We have 15 CTE programs, and one of the things the programs need is funding to keep these programs in operation so that these high school students can be job-ready when they graduate.
I've had a internship already with a custom action voice, and I'm very excited to be doing under graphic research with UT this summer.
I would love to either become a hairstylist or an esthetician. I want to pursue welding as a career.
Lenore City has a strong tradition of believing in our students, supporting our students, and we want to continue that investment as we continue to grow and thrive as a school community.
I am looking forward to my future here at Lenore City Schools and the opportunities that are to bring with me.
Thank you for supporting our school.
Dr. Barker, Superintendent of Schools for Lenore City, step to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, and I just wanted you to hear from our students and our teachers, the great things that are going on in Lenore City Schools. And I want to say thank you to Commissioner Waller for calling me and asking me to share an update about our school district and also share some current numbers for you. So I appreciate this opportunity to come and do that. I'm here to show you numbers supporting the fact that we have enough space and capacity and opportunity with outstanding academic programming to continue to serve the high school students in the city and county's North End. Let me be honest, I don't want a new high school because it is not needed. We have no problem serving the students in grades nine through 12, and Loudoun County taxpayers do not need another $100 million school to serve the students we are currently serving in grades nine, 12. We are not against something, building something in Lenore City to address school growth, but a high school is unnecessary. Let me give you the specifics and the data to support that. You have a packet, and if you will turn to page three in that packet, you will see some data. This data was pulled after Commissioner Waller called me, so it's just two minutes old. In Lenore City High School, we currently have 52% of the students that are Lenore City residents, 48% live outside the city limits. And if you know about Lenore City Limits, you know that we have an entire community that is within a stone's throw of that school. So Loudoun, they are considered Loudoun County residents, those that live in Harrison Hills, but actually are, they could walk across the street to our high school. State teacher-student ratio for a 9-12 school is that we have an average of 30 students in a class, no class to exceed 35. In Lenore City High School right now, no class is over the maximum, and the average class size is 18. We have room. There you see the specifics. Ninth grade, we have a total of 327 students, 164 of those live outside the city limits currently. In the 10th grade, we have 348 students, 175 of those students live outside the city limits. In the 11th grade, we have 274 students, 140 of those live outside the city limits. And in the 12th grade, 285 students, 132 students live outside the city limits. Our total student population is 1,234. We have, we did however, graduate 27 in December, so that would be added to that amount, but I wanted to give you current data. On page four in the packet, you will see some things that we have done at Lenore City High School to address growth and capacity. We can conserve, currently, we can serve an additional 200, 250 students with existing space and academic opportunities. The space that we have added over the past three years have, we have spent over $8 million in improvements. We opened an expanded cafeteria to serve an additional 300 students every lunch period. In 2022, we created multi-service fields to service all of our, all of our extracurricular programs so that it can be multi-use. In 2023, we expanded, put in a million dollars in our CTE classes, programming up to 15 areas of concentration on our campus. And in 2023, we added classrooms in the gym, and we enhanced the use of space, and we also added air conditioning so it can be used year-round. If you look at page five in your packet, you will see the expanded college credit opportunities. In 2021, we added a middle college opportunity for our students. We started with four students who graduated, and they graduated with their associate's degree at the same time as they graduated their high school diploma. This year, we will increase that number to 15. We have online credit opportunities for students in 9-12, over 620 classes were taken this year, and currently, we are enrolling students for next year, and 60% of our rising 11th and 12th graders are requesting one or more dual enrollment courses. Work-based learning and internships have increased. We've not even touched the opportunity to do some creative scheduling for those juniors and seniors who drive to school and who may benefit from an early grade class and then leave the campus a little early. So there are a lot of things that we can do to manage growth in addition to the 200, 250 that we can handle today. So hearing clearly, we have enough space in grades nine through 12 at our high school to serve our community. These students are in our classrooms today. We have room for them and more at the high school level. We welcome you to tour Lenore City High School and see for yourself the great work and capacity we have as we care for our students. So again, as a taxpayer and a resident of Loudoun County, I think it would be a misuse of our tax dollars to spend $100 million on a new school when we currently have one that's serving our 9-12 students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just a few questions. What's the overall capacity of each of the three schools, max capacity for each school?
You have that in your packet, so if you will turn with me. Let me get my packet open then. You will see that we have, we have an addition with our student-teacher ratio with the high school, I already mentioned it's at 18. So we have the capacity there for well over 200, 250 without even touching creative scheduling. At the current enrollment at the elementary school, we have 90% of students there that are Lenore City residents, 10% that are Loudoun County residents. We are pushing it there. Our student-teacher ratio is supposed not to go beyond 20, and we're at 19.8. So it is very full, and, and that's with most of those students, 90% now Lenore City residents. Then at the middle school, you will see there, 86% of the students there are in Lenore City, 14% Loudoun County students. In grades four and five, the student-teacher ratio cannot go above 25 average, we're at 23, so we have just a small amount of capacity there. In grades six through eight, the capacity is at 30 by state law, we're at 28, so.
I just didn't know if there was a defined number of how many kids could fit in an individual school. I understand ratios, but is it 800 kids at the elementary school? I just didn't know what like the definitive max number was you could have in each school.
Well, it has to go by teacher-student ratio. We currently do not have any classes at the elementary school that we can add. At the middle school, we have two available classes. So we have a, a small amount to grow more at the middle school, but the elementary school is very full. We have some ESL students, teachers that are sharing classrooms actually, so. And then we have, I didn't mention, a couple of years ago, three years ago, when we were looking at crowding situation, we thought, what can we do without adding additional classrooms? So we created a new school. It's called the I-Learn Institute. It serves grades K through 12. It operates out of the first floor of the central office downtown, and we currently have 109 students there. And, and this is on the last page of your packet, you can see there, in 2022, we graduated 31 students from that program. In 2023, we graduated 27, and we're on track this year to graduate 22. So that program has helped us tremendously meet some of the space needs. We still have space needs, K-A. We do. K-A is where I would love to have some help. 9-12, we have capacity, and as we look to what, the decisions that you all need to make, I, I just make, want to make sure that you know that we don't need another high school. Now, do we need other things? And I'm certainly not against building something in Lenore City. Certainly, I'm not against that. What I am adamantly opposed to is a 9-12 school because we are currently seating those students and we have capacity to grow. So I would ask that you look at, at something else that the school board might need to meet the, the growth demands of our area, and we are growing. I know that.
I don't have any questions. I want to tell you, I find this highly offensive. We have our school board director back here, Hifit School Board, his number two, they have come and said what they feel the county needs. I don't know why you think you know better what the county needs than the county knows what they need. Have you been to their school board and approached them with this? Have you tried to convince them that this is not what they need to do? And they would come to us and say, oh, never mind, Ms. Barker was correct, we don't need to do this.
As I'm saying, I'm here to tell you that I'm totally, is that I'm providing you the data, the real-time data, so that you can make those decisions. Everybody has their wants. Everybody has an opinion. I'm sharing you the data and to tell you, if you look at that, then there has to be additional discussions.
You, you just mentioned that you were concerned about the taxes. You just came off of a sales tax increase push with everything you had, yet you're concerned about raising taxes. That's not in the form of a question, I'm not looking for an answer. You're, I, I've never heard about this. You want to add classrooms, 20 classrooms down your lower grades, where do you think those children will go when they get to high school?
We have plenty of capacity at the high school. I'm sharing you the numbers that right now, we could take 200 or more, walk in the door today. We have a lot of creative ways to address that growth in the future. We have programs that we have added that are there and waiting for students. As you saw in the video, you saw children at the early grades, first and second graders talk about what they want to be when they grow up. It is our passion to make sure that we are providing them all of those opportunities. A comprehensive high school can do that, and we have students that are already working with UTK. We have students that are graduating with their associate's degrees. So we have the capacity, we have the program, we have all of those things that are in place to address any growth now and the future.
Lenore City has approved over 5,200 new residential dwellings inside the city limits in less than three years. You have room for 200 kids. The last time you were here complaining about something we were doing, your former chairman sat right there behind where you're standing now and said, yes, I had a question for one of our commissioners, we might have to consider a tuition, yes, we might have to consider limiting county students. It's what the man said sitting right back there. So I don't know what.
Who are you talking about? Are you talking about Mr. Coleman?
Yes, yes ma'am.
He's no longer the, the board chair, and I cannot speak for the board, but I can tell you what their heart is. I'll tell you what my heart is, and that is to serve these children, you saw? To make sure their hopes and dreams come true, to make sure they have every opportunity. And the way that we can serve the best is where we, where we already have these programs in place. There is no need to create another set of programs when we already have all of the facilities, all of the programs that can help these children on their road to achieving their hopes and dreams and aspirations. We are all about making sure that Lenore City and Loudoun County has the future, ready to take your place and my place.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you for coming. I'd just like to say I have extreme confidence in our county director of schools and our county school board. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing the head count numbers.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for asking for them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask for a slight indulgence. Our chairman Stan, our, our board director's right back there on the back row, just, he has no idea I'm going to say this, would you like to share anything tonight, Mike? Related to what you've heard? Have you been to the city council meeting and told them they shouldn't be doing stuff? You done any of that?
I think we need to move on.
I'm not here to debate. I'm just, because, but I will be sharing with county commission our needs. I represent 10 elected members of our school board that represent the community that elected them. I would not publicly say what I think are for Lenore City plans and for their needs. I can only speak to mine, and both my current board and my previous board have unanimously voted, but this is the direction we need to go, considering the data that we have on that end of the county, as far as the county as a whole too. And it serves several facets for us that, that we'll be sharing this time before.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
I guess it's, it's kind of been said that, you know, Lenore City High School is running out of room, and I, I think what we heard tonight, that they've got plenty of room for growth. And I used to be deeply embedded with Lenore City Schools, and I have the highest respect for all the people sitting here in the audience. I know where, where their hearts are, how much they love kids, how much they want kids to be successful, and I'm proud of Lenore City Schools. That's my district, so I appreciate you all coming tonight.
And I don't have a problem with that at all. Everybody has their opinion.
Yep.
I'm going to take my opinion from our director of schools and from our school board. They've done their homework, they've done their job with their great people, they love our kids, and that's where I'm going to take my direction.
All right, Dr. Smith.
I'm Dr. Melissa Smith, Dr. Melissa Thady Smith. I'm the Assistant Director of Schools in Lenore City, and I'm a graduate of Lenore City High School in 1987. And I just want to say that we're here to advocate for Lenore City High School. We're not here to be derogatory to anyone else. We just wanted to share what we know and what we love and what our students love about Lenore City High School. And that's what we are all doing here, to just make sure that we advocate for our school system, that we advocate for our school and our students. And we just wanted to share a little bit about what their experience is and what their hopes and dreams are for the future, and so many of them are looking forward to attending Lenore City High School and taking advantage of all of our opportunities. And so that's why we're here, is just to advocate for our schools, not to be derogatory to anyone else, or suggest that we have plans for the county. We don't. We just wanted to make sure that our voice was heard, and we can share our numbers and what we know to be true about our enrollment and the space that we have available at Lenore City High School. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Chad Lewis.
I no longer need to speak.
Okay. Mike Colicone.
Thank you. Mayor, county commissioners, I want to thank you on behalf of the James Ridge Homestead Association for the help that you gave us in trying to stop this annexation of Dry Valley Road and bring in high-density housing. I thank you for this proposed resolution that was just handed to me, and we just want you to know the surrounding citizens around Dry Valley Road, as well as James Ridge Estates really appreciate everything you've done for us. Okay? We also appreciate the idea that you're looking to defund the EDA. And I, I think that's a, a great move. Obviously, they've aligned themselves with real estate agents that do not have the best interest of Loudoun County residents. So again, thank you for what you've done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mike, I wanted to thank you for all your all's hard work. When we go to these meetings with the city planning, the room's packed, and it's all James Ridge, Prospect, Church Road, folks in that community, the greatest district in Loudoun County, the fourth district. So. Thank you for all your hard work.
All of the 28 people that live there.
That's right.
Michelle Fritz.
My name is Michelle Harris Fritz, and I'm a lifelong resident of Loudoun County. I have several concerns to bring before Commission Denon. I'm requesting an explanation from this commission regarding why Fifth District Commissioners Shaver and Morrison's ARPA funds are not being spent on the legal expenses that the county is accruing for the annexation lawsuit brought by the county against Lenore City for purported legal, illegal annexation as promised by both commissioners. I confirmed with the finance department that only the first billing was paid from the Fifth District ARPA funds, but the subsequent hefty and continuing expenses are being paid by the taxpayers from the county legal fund and not ARPA funding. I'm requesting an answer as to why this commission told taxpayers one thing yet are doing another. I was also puzzled as to why Dr. Barker was not on the agenda, given Commissioner Waller's emails to me regarding obtaining the 2009 county BOE attorney's legal opinion stating that city students were to be treated as out-of-county students. When I received his email stating that he invited her to speak at county commission, I was hopeful that this commission would receive her in good faith, but confused as to why she was not on the agenda. I'm also disappointed in lack of the 2009 county BOE attorney Cagle's legal opinion and recent county commission attorney Bowman's legal opinion, both based upon Tennessee law, Attorney General, and some pre-court rulings, that these issues are not being discussed tonight. I am sure you all have been given a copy of these legal opinions, even though some have denied that the 2009 opinion existed. Former county BOE board member Commissioner Shaver, county BOE Bobby Johnson Jr. and Scott Newman were on the county school board in 2009 when Attorney Cagle's opinion was rendered and discussed in public. It is my opinion that these legal opinions are being kept from the public discussion by this commission because these opinions do not fit the narrative that a new county middle high school is needed at the North End. It is also my opinion that the sales agreement between First Baptist Church Lenore City and the county BOE is a sweetheart deal. What should have been a simple land transaction transformed into several concessions for the church. Here are the facts. First Baptist Church purchased the property in 2021 for 25K per acre for church growth, sold it less than a year later to Loudoun County BOE for 52,000 per acre. Given first right of refusal to purchase back the property, promised a request, promised or requested a private road for church use only across taxpayer property at taxpayer expense, but denied exclusive use by the legal counsel and given use of taxpayer parking lots. In fact, it appears based upon the initial drawings compared to the current ones, that some concessions have already been made to the church in providing more parking at the Simpson Road by cutting tennis courts from the school side, not to mention the free soul given to First Baptist Church, which is a commodity and is desperately needed at our county landfill. According to the numbers I obtained from Mr. Garing in the 22, 23 school year, county schools enrolled 398 city students, 350 of the 398 at North Middle, Eaton's, and Highland Park. For the current 23, 24 school year, approximately 335 Lenore City students, 298 of the 335 at North Eaton and Highland Park. Bottom line, student numbers fell at these locations from last year. Eaton 679 to 675, North Middle 774 to 748, Highland Park 401 to 387. If we are overcrowded at the middle and elementary schools on the North End, why are we talking about building a high school, which is approximately 2.5 miles from another high school? We are not getting supporting information from the school board, including a feasibility study about the growth, and yet to see the traffic study nor costs associated with road improvements to support this site. The taxpayers are owed a $115 million explanation before Loudoun County BOE spends one more penny. Thank you.
Whoa, you asked a question?
Yes.
I have no idea what you're talking about, the legal fees. We have paid out ARPA funds, every bill that's come in on the annexation lawsuit.
Aaron.
That is true.
Thank you.
That is true.
Cleared up for you?
Somebody was transferred.
Are you cleared up by now?
No, I'm not, because that's not what I received from Aaron.
Well, you'll have to take that with Aaron at the office someday. There's been one bill submitted and we paid it.
Okay, what about the 6,000 and something one that came in?
Don't nothing about 6,000 when something came in. Kyle Basely handles the annexation lawsuit, he submitted one bill.
I don't have those records in front of me, so I would have to go look, but they have paid for all of the legal fees.
That is not what you told me, Aaron. You told me that they were being paid out of the general fund because you cannot have recurring payments from the.
Legal fees are paid out of the general fund. They moved their money into the general fund to cover those fees.
But what about the recurring fees? Live the dress down.
You don't have to. Recurring fees is meaning what?
The recurring legal fees.
Well, when it comes in, we pay it out of 101.
That's not recurring, salaries are recurring. These are bills.
Not necessarily one-time expenditures. They are paid out of 101, and then they use their ARPA money to reimburse general fund 101, whatever fees are.
Excuse me, but that is not what I was told.
I can't help what you were told, I'm telling you what facts are.
Okay.
Like or not.
So do we have legal bills that are accruing that have not been paid on this lawsuit?
Yes, ma'am. Probably a large one. Large one, that'd be my guess, probably bigger than the first one.
And are you going to pay these out?
Yes, ma'am, 100% straight out of our ARPA funds. I think your time's up.
That was not very nice, Mr. Shaver.
I'm not real nice on that. It's not been a good night for my. Yeah. I practice at it.
You're good at it.
I could answer the agenda issue, it was already published, and I did give Dr. Barker out of respect for her position. She could come back next workshop and be on the agenda, or she could speak tonight under public comments, if she chose tonight. Pat Hunter.
My name is Pat Hunter, and I would like to address a couple of agenda items. Number two, the Loudoun County Code Enforcement Director, amending of Article 5. I dropped by the office on Friday to pick up, I'm assuming, changes to the 5, but they were not ready, so it's very hard to talk about an item if the information isn't readily available. The other item that I would like to, and I think this is, this is very important because this involves property owners' rights. The other item is Commissioner Chase Randolph, the staff development meeting in September at the Loudoun County, the Loudoun Municipal Park, excuse me. First of all, this is not a capital project expenditure.
I'm pulling that from the agenda that I passed.
Well, let me finish because.
Go ahead, Ms. Randolph.
I think it's very important. The Budget Committee did not vote on this, and oddly enough, I agreed with them because I saw this as a picnic for the employees. Now, I'm not saying that they don't deserve appreciation. They do. But I think the biggest appreciation that the taxpayers have shown is the fact that they are still paying 18%, and the taxpayers are paying 82% of the health insurance. So I see that as great appreciation from the taxpayers. The last item that I would like to talk about is Dr. Barker and her comments. My children attended county schools, K through 8, and then went to Lenore City High School. They both graduated. I have a son who's an architect, a grandson who's an engineer. They had a very good education. What I'm concerned about is what was discussed in 2009 and 10. There was an article, "Out-of-County Students Debated," Director of Schools Wayne Honeycutt began the discussion talking about the relationship between the Loudoun County school system and Lenore City schools. Honeycutt said students who live inside the city, live in Lenore City, are treated exactly as the same as out-of-county students based on the legal opinion of Attorney Chuck Cagle. I was sitting in the audience when it was passed out, and I still keep it. It was a big out-of-county, and it included the discussion about Lenore City. The reason that I'm bringing this up is Lenore City proper will not pay the education debt service tax. So if we are taxed 20 cents or 30 cents, Lenore City will not pay for it. Now, I spoke to the school board a couple of months ago, and I asked them to look into this issue because if they're not going to go to tax, I'm suggesting that we have tuition. And the reason that I think tuition will be equitable is because they're not going to pay the $150 million tax for the building of Brick and Morn. So I think that we have to have a discussion about that. I also have a concern about the enrollment. Back in 2014, at the request of Chairman Bledsoe, he requested enrollment. Back in 2010, the enrollment was 5,485. According to Mr. Garen, the enrollment when he came before the school board, I mean, the Budget Committee, was 5,084. So we have had a decrease of 401 students. Now, we're starting to make up. Some of them are coming back, but this needs to be addressed. We get no feasibility study, no traffic study, up to the point that I spoke before the school board, and these issues have to be fully vetted before you impose a 30-cent tax, given the fact that 2,800 letters went out by the trustee on delinquent tax accounts. Now, Mr. Shaver may be absolutely correct that we will collect that money, but it will be at somebody's expense, losing their property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Collins came, he got here late, got tied up in traffic. He has requested an opportunity for pleases of the commission. He didn't want to say just a comment.
Let me add him to the list. Come on up. State your name again.
My name is Wayne Collins.
Got it.
I'm a citizen of Lenore City, pay city taxes and so forth. I was listening to the education of representation from Lenore City. I was actually at the meeting when they first brought up the tax referendum that just failed. Nothing was mentioned about education. Nothing. Only thing that was mentioned in that meeting was building a sports complex. That was it. And on the side, they said, "We might give some of the tax to the school or maybe the park rec," but that was it. Nothing else. And that's what this was all about. And I brought up the fact that we're at a 40-year-high inflation. People are living paycheck to paycheck, and Lenore City wanted to tax them for something that was not a necessity for the city. That's pretty embarrassing for a city council to throw that out there, knowing these facts. And I'm all for education. I'm all for these kids being educated the best they can be. Spent 26 years in the military for this. And Lenore City, show me manufacturing. Seeing up here where these kids are studying manufacturing. Show me where they're manufacturing in Lenore City. They're not. They're happy to get restaurants in. That's it. They don't want manufacturing. They want to build, but they don't want to put the cart, they put the cart before the horse, not after the horse. 321, look at the dividers going down the road. They could widen those roads to accommodate the traffic. It's common sense government. They had a bypass that was approved over here downtown Lenore City to go over the dam so they didn't have to stop the light. It was approved. They struck it down. The problem we have in Lenore City is not revenue, it's those that are spending the revenue. In December, and I encourage every one of you to go and look at the records, recorded records of the meetings in December, and see if I'm not right about this, because it was on the record. Everything was recorded. There was an article in the News Herald about it when I got up there and talked. So I encourage everybody to look at what they say on the record that day and what they're saying now, because it is totally different. They're throwing everything against the wall to see what sticks. And Lenore City showed that they're tired of it. We want new representation, and hopefully it comes over here, but we'll get it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes public comments. Jim Jenkins, come on up here and tell us about Article 5.
Oh, Jim, come on.
Commissioner, I'll give you a little update. So this is our, at your last workshop, we give you a little preview to the Article 5 amendment, so we've been working on the planning commission. So this resolution will be basically that. To refresh you, there were some new zoning districts, created a 3, a 2, a T1, and a CF vision. There was some increase in lot sizes and then basically placing allowed uses in appropriate districts. So I believe everyone at the last meeting, I hope you all received the amended resolution as it was. I want to go real quick, based on planning commissions, replies to me, and tell you what changes were made at that time to reflect their recommendations. So some verbage changed in the A1 and A2. It's talking about, you speak hot junior in there, basically goes into cultivating, harvesting products, you know, agricultural wise. We added approval by the Highway Department, Sheriff's Office, and Fire Services under the segment for arts and crafts festivals that are allowed within the A1 zone. We, basically for daycares, which was questioned, how do you handle daycares, which is an amended location, just purely that they would comply with the state of Tennessee licensing of the daycares. You read that. You're a daycare, you go above and over and below, but nevertheless, we added that verbage. We clarified townhouse, condo locations that are going to be in the R2 as a special exception. The zoning districts, the setbacks were changed in the A1 and A2. Those were actually changed back to their original setbacks, so there are no setback changes in those zoning districts. The O1 district, there were some comments made about the minimum lot in O1, that's an office professional district. It was a one-acre lot size. There was concern about that being large enough to facilitate buildings, parking, stormwater detention, things of that nature. So that was increased to two acres and some cleaning up of the allowable stories and height, things of that nature. This was the feedback from our planning commissioners that they sent to me for us to address with those items there. So we taking care of that. I will tell you that the planning commission voted seven to one in approval of this amended resolution at our meeting. Just a few facts. Not everyone was in attendance, able to attend the meeting. There was some discussion during, thought to be fair, I would share that. Most affected, as we all know, seem to be the A1 and A2. The moving things in appropriate districts is pretty minor as a fact. Goes from January 23 to January 24. Through their office, there was about 59 plats submitted that were A1 or A2. Did not look through all those plats, but that's a decent number just to put into account. Those plats would have been affected by our zoning changes in some way. There was some questions from the general public as to how to handle this, concerning when it would take effect, who would be affected, you know, people that have been waiting for weeks for a subdivision to be submitted, things of that nature. That's where some of the public concern came from. Of course, there was concern that if we do this, then, just being honest, we're concerned the commission's going to say they'll rezone, you know, for some parcels for family, but then not do that as the future comes. I'm just expressing those concerns. So, you know, as we look at doing this, you know, you all adopt this amendment or you won't. As you do adopt it, you know, there's an effective date that is now in this document that says May 6, 2024. That's under the assumption that it would pass at your next meeting. Obviously, if it doesn't, that number will be changed. So ultimately, we're looking at the effects. Not every property that's on A1 or A2 will be affected by it. Not every property comes in and tries to subdivide any things. But what this does do is it allows some direction and how to look at the cause and effect, looking at larger development, its effect on the infrastructure, its effect on the surrounding community, its effect on our services, and it's just more of a tool to use to better manage responsible growth. Everybody talks about responsible growth, but I'm just not sure what that means or what that looks like. But this is a tool to do this. There are some places that these regs would have been in place. It may have helped in some situations that the county has faced. But on the same token, all these regulations, a lot of concern, this has just come up. There's been some minor changes over the past three years. Some of those changes have been to help the people that are trying to subdivide a lot or two, or maybe even five lots, to give them some more flexibility. Those changes have also occurred. This is a pretty large and significant change compared to what we've done over the years. But on the same token, it's probably zoning has been anything else, probably to be looked at a little more often instead of over a, what is that, 53-year span of time? You know, things are changing in our community. But if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. The new document is in your packet, I apologize. And Ms. Sumner was right. Those are the changes that were made that'll reflect into the new document.
Jim, I have one question. Just a quick scenario. I have a property owner in my district, 30 acres.
Yep.
He wants to sell seven and a half acres to a friend.
Okay.
Sells it. We can take that out to make out an R1, or an A1, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Because it meets the five acres and more. That friend then wants to subdivide that property of 3.75 to split it between two family members. Would that then go to a 3, or would that go to a 2?
So we would look at the property as it's currently zoned. If it's an A1 property right now, you know, your minimum one acre. If this law would come into place, you're five acres. He subdivides off seven and a half acres. Well, your minimum lot is now five acres, right? But if he cuts that in half, he could literally just go to an A2, which would be a two-and-a-half acre lot size, absolutely.
So that would just go to an A2, no issue?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so if you're coming down, you're almost case by case. What is it you're looking to do?
That's right.
And what can we work?
Okay. I just wanted to, I had that discussion today. I just wanted to confirm I was absolutely correct on that.
So have we thought about green belts? Like if somebody had 16 acres and they wanted to give an acre away to their child or whatever, and they didn't get rezoned, and then so they would have to come out of a green belt and give them five acres then? I mean, green belts haven't been discussed at all.
You're correct. So if it's A1 and you're going to subdivide, we're going to say your minimum lot size is five acres. All the commission is here, as I understand, when we're looking at subdividing properties, you know, I don't, there's probably a lot of people that don't want to give an acre to a kid or five acres to a child. So then it would be up to them to come before the commission to request, you know, "I want to do a one-acre lot size," or maybe an acre and a half lot size. Well, it doesn't beat the A2, even at an acre and a half. They would have to request rezoning tape for an acre. And then, yes, ma'am, that decision would be in your all's hands as to grant that request.
Look, the green belt's not local. That's a state thing. The 15-acre green belt thing, that's not our prerogative. If somebody has 16 acres, you needn't really take the 15. If somebody has 15 acres and they want to give away an acre of land, they would have to, or not give away, but whatever they want to do with it, they would have to decide whether or not giving away that one acre would matter enough to give up their green belt status or whether they wouldn't want to.
That's what I'm saying.
It doesn't affect this.
That has nothing to do with our.
It doesn't do with us.
I just went, I gave my daughter five acres from the build a house on. I went through the deeds and all that stuff, then I had to go back and reapply and change the parameters to get back into green belt. That was just a matter of going up to the courthouse and getting the papers.
That's a personal choice if somebody.
What happened to your taxes?
I had to, yeah, if you come out of the green belt, like I said, that was a significant slap in the face. I didn't realize that was coming.
Yeah, boy.
But they recoup that break you got for, what is it, four years?
Yeah.
Four or five years. I told my daughter, I said, "You know, your dad loves you that I'm going to give you five acres, but I'm going to have to pay the back taxes on it too."
But Pete, take the new updated Article 5. That would not change what your question is at all. That would be the same issue as it is right now.
Green belt's the same for everybody.
I am going to plan to offer one more proposal to add to this. I spoke to the Farm Bureau Board of Directors, I guess it was, Commissioner Quillen, Commissioner Randolph, Commissioner Morrison, I was there. Great, great little bit we had. They were, those are the people that represent large tract owners. A lot of them are, I mean, a lot of property. They were all over this. It's the question, do you, are you interested in preserving rural open space farmland, or are you interested in just building everything anywhere all the time? If you like the high density, you're not going to like Article 5 update. If you like preservation, you're going to like Article 5 update. But the biggest, one of the biggest changes we're making is in this agricultural. And what I would like to include with this, Jim, whether you want to add this to it, y'all are hearing me say it, for the first five years, for the first five years under this new change, any rezone request from A to A to A for three lots or less, is that what y'all like, Jim?
Yeah, I like work from the.
Okay, three lots or less, we would waive the rezoning fee. It's a $200 fee to rezone. Since we're creating this, then I think it's only fair to give some kind of, we're not talking about SCADs of money here, it's a very small amount of money, but at least we would be creating the hardship. Right now, if you rezone from A to R, you pay it. So there's no difference there. But if you're going to go from A to A to A, I'd like to include waiving the $200 fee for the next five years on three lot subdivisions.
I don't know that it's a matter of money. You know, the people that were at the planning commission, it was more of being turned down and getting rezoned. That's the big negative that I heard and that I have with this.
I hire them too. Most of them are realtors and developers, so.
Not.
Couple of them were, a couple of them weren't.
Could be.
That's all I got, Jim.
Anybody else have anything else?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Jim.
And it has been a chore. It's been going on for eight months through ETDD, from Jim's office and everywhere else, the planning commission, it's been a journey. And we have six more articles yet to update also.
If anybody has any questions, you can.
Jim, May sixth, Jim, May sixth commission meeting?
Yes, sir.
Any changes, make sure you get them to Tammy so she can include them with the package for May sixth.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim.
No, I'm good.
Good job.
Thank you, Jim. Commissioner Randolph?
Thank you, Chairman. As mentioned before, I need to remove A, but that will be revisited. And I need to add a discussion on extreme noise at Loco Drive-In. So I will start with B, the approval of ARPA funds. That's just the formality from the feds, it's the second reading, we passed it last month. Please add that to the May sixth agenda.
It'll be on there.
Let me point out this juncture, just because it's probably important to point it out, because a lot of people just apparently don't understand. Every nonprofit contribution to an ARPA has to go through the budget committee. It has to come through workshop and it has to be voted on twice. It's, it's publicized in local papers, one or the other, every single one of them. Nobody has ever sneaked any ARPA money into anybody's hands anywhere. So Chase is going right through the process as we all have.
So last night I'm at the house and story time with Chase. So I'm sitting in my living room, I live about a mile away from the Loco Drive-In theater and lounge. All of a sudden, I start hearing extreme bass, boom, boom. What the heck? Go to the front porch, I can hear the lyrics to the songs. Couldn't make it, couldn't find what they're playing, but extremely loud. End up getting nine, either emails, phone calls, or text messages from people that live in the Giffen Circle, Queener Road, I know Commissioner Shaver got an email that he copied me on from somebody that lives on Queener Road, so ten in all. I know that it was bothersome to weigh more than ten people, that was just the ten people that reached out. And this went on all last summer. And it's not the movies that they play, that does not disturb the neighborhood, it's not the Tennessee football games, it's these rodeos. And I think last night was just a concert. So about seven thirty, I decided I'm going to go out here and check it out myself. So I pull in, go up to the gentleman there selling the tickets and explain to him, I'm not, I'm not here to buy a ticket, what time is this shutting down? He said, ten o'clock. I will say they did shut down at ten o'clock. Who, who has given you permission, you know, to do this with this extreme noise? And he told me that they had permit from the city allowing. I said, okay. So I had reached out in the past to the city over this matter. I think we've even discussed it in here before. What can we do? I'm done, I'm tired, I'm sick of it, okay? This thing is not what it was built to be. Originally, they're going to show new movies, maybe had to show a new movie to my knowledge. These concerts are disruptive to people. I put my seven-year-old to bed last night. All you educators know, it's state testing. He sleeps with a box fan, high as it'll go. We're laying there and he said, Daddy, what's that noise? I said, son, that's the bass from the, from the concert, a mile away from here. So if I'm experiencing that at my house, I know these ten people that reached out to me, and many more, I would say you, sir, can you hear it at your house?
That place is a nice law.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready to, to take this to the fullest of our governing power to see what we can do.
Sure. Anything? I mean, I appreciate you bringing that up, Chase. I also received a few phone calls and, and it's loud, it's encumbranting. You know, we brought it up to the EDA. I think we need to write another formal complaint to the EDA. EDA is the managing agent. Mayor Brad Young and myself do sit on that board. We, we had a discussion with the EDA. We did send a letter telling them that we felt there were violation. On the last one, I think we need to send another.
The EDA sent that to the owner of the drive-in?
Owner of the drive-in. They, of course, sent back a letter saying that they weren't.
They were in their legal rights.
In their legal rights. So I think we need to send another letter. Maybe we, we, maybe ask Bob Bowman to take a look at this. But we have a big issue with noise. The bigger issue that I see along with the noise is all the folks leaving there loaded up on the, all the.
Bunch of drunks, should say what it is, a bunch of drunks coming out of Mason rodeo. Let's call it what it is, man.
So.
Ridiculous.
I have a big issue with, with that. I do know the police department went out there a couple of times yesterday for, for noise. So I, I think we've got to get a lot more serious.
I think even Loud, City of Loud, there's noise ordinance first. I think it's nine o'clock.
I was told they're working on a noise ordinance with MTAS.
I was at BD, there was a school the next day, you pretty much had to have everything shut up by about nine o'clock. You said they went until ten?
They called it, the noise ordinance in the City of Loud said it's ten o'clock.
It's too loud, I don't care if it's middle afternoon.
Yeah.
It don't matter, man. Too loud.
I got some yesterday too, I got some complaints about it as well.
I guess I've gotten old.
I'm going to, you're going to get older if you don't die. I'm going to go ahead and do my little front spiel and offer a possibility. Almost to the day a year ago, this body at a nine to one vote, voted to give all of our authority over that area down there to the EDA and put Mr. Qualls in charge of all lease agreements. He rewrote the original agreement between Loudoun, Loudoun County, and we gave it all away. Right now, Mr. Qualls can choose and pick whatever gets leased and whatever they do down there. All of it's contractual, all of it's in paperwork. If we want to undo that, you bring it forward. I'll guarantee y'all vote to undo the changes we made in, in April of two thousand twenty-three. It was, it was ridiculous when we did it. The document in front of us had scratch marks on it, we didn't even want to find what the document said. That was my biggest concern when we did it. And now we know what we're living with. And you, Gary, Chase, somebody will remember when we took it to the EDA last time, pretty much we was told, nothing to do about it. Yeah, I think we can. And whatever you want to do, I'm on board with you. But we own, by the way, we own sixty percent of the land. We're not just picking on Loudoun City. County owns sixty percent of this leased property that we get two hundred dollars a month for, forever. Two hundred dollars.
How long is the contract for?
Five years and if I renew, if they want it, forever. Basically, it's forever contract. And you couldn't get a better one than that. Land makers property.
The EDA brokered that deal?
Yes, sir, they brokered that deal. Two hundred dollars per acre. I mean, per year, I'm sorry, not per acre, per year. You put together what you want to do, talk, buy, talk to city, whoever you want to, you bring us back something, I'm with you, whatever you want to do. The movie was a problem, I think they addressed that. We had the problem with all the bad language that was going all over the neighborhood, just the general volume, I think they addressed that. You can't run this through speakers in the car. It's not good.
No, it's bad, it's bad.
I think that's Bob Bowman.
Yeah, let's get with Bob on that. And then we draft up a letter to the EDA and City of Loudoun in our opposition of this.
People shouldn't have to put up with that.
I don't know, cutting EDA fund might get their attention, I'm not sure. Just one more vote, I'll be there.
Okay. Chase, is that it?
That's it, sir.
Okay, Gary Whitfield, Commissioner Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wonder if you have a resolution that I'd like to send to, to Planning, Loudoun City Planning Commission, Loudoun City Mayor, Loudoun City Council. Just letting them know that we strongly oppose an annexation of Drive Valley and we strongly oppose R3 zoning for Drive Valley Road. I think it's, we, we have sent one letter, I think we need to send another. And I would appreciate if everybody would stand up and support my community out there and support the people of James Ridge, support all the folks that have shown up, taken their time, missing work to try to preserve this county property. So I would, I'll be asking for that in the form of a motion at our next meeting. And I would really appreciate all your support.
I'm down for you. It'll be on May sixth, commission meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next up is Director of Budgets, Erin Rice. She also has in her package a request from the mayor that deals with county employees to get deployed through the military service. We have two of those.
As well as the corporate park drive land as well.
Yep. Okay.
I can, I propose the budget commission that passed, I think it'd have you problem passing. We have several folks, county employees that are National Guard agents. And so when they deploy, I think it would be nothing less than appropriate that we would cover any difference they have. If they make eight hundred dollars a week here, they make five hundred while they're deployed, we cover that three hundred. It would be up to the department head to fill out the form. That way, any man or woman that's out here serving this great nation will be held whole as long as they're Loudoun County employees. Be my question to this commission. The land at Corporate Park Drive, according to our appraisal, it's worth around three twenty-eight. City of Loudoun, or actually Loudoun Utilities, had their own private appraisal, two hundred and forty. We kind of split the baby, so to speak, in that past budget as well. I'll just lock that down as well, kind of the mode voting meeting.
You want it on May sixth, Trey?
I have a couple of those, yes.
Under Erin.
How much are we proposing to sell it per acre for?
You would ask, why they follow it?
A lot.
Oh, no. It's the cheapest property in Loudoun County, let me tell you.
The total sale price was what, two forty?
Two eighty-five.
Two eighty-five, yeah.
Eleven or twelve thousand dollars, something like that.
Twenty-one acres.
No, it's more than that.
Do the math. Whatever the total amount divided by the acre.
It's twenty, it's a little over twenty-one acres.
Uh huh.
At two eighty-four.
Fourteen thousand acres.
How much?
Thirteen thousand acre effective.
Around fourteen acres.
That's, that's a bargain on some land in Loudoun County. Even down here, that's a good deal. That's LUV's offer to us, correct? We don't know if they'll take our counter offer or not, right? Because their offer was ten thousand acres, correct?
Yes.
I don't care what the first one was.
I think their offer, whatever he gave us tonight, I left mine in the truck, I think it was about ten thousand acres.
I think we were at fifteen, so we met him probably at twelve five.
Right at thirteen and a half, correct.
We know what it is now, that's not what they offered.
Is there going to be any stipulations right up with that?
It was also not being available, it may LUV service.
The property, when it, the pregnant comeback, the property's not fit to build on. It's, I mean, if you go look at the property, it's, it's a substation.
They're going to bill electric.
That's all they're going to do.
But they can take it if they want it to, can't they?
No, not us, they can't. You know, by giving domain? Giving domain, no.
Absolutely.
Not twenty-one, not twenty-one acres, they can't.
No, they're.
Can't take twenty-one acres.
To use, to use a five hundred by five hundred pad, no, they're not taking twenty-one acres. This is not TBA, I assure you. So, so the budget committee did vote on it, I don't think it was unanimous vote. I think it was partial votes.
I heard no names, so I think that is unanimous.
We'll see, we'll see how that goes on the, in May.
All right, the other items that the budget committee recommended was twenty thousand from Seventh District, Mr. Cullen, to T-Barc, which is Helco Voters Assistance Response Team as a contribution. A consideration of a request for a wage increase and part-time position in the property assessor's office. This will not cost any additional funds this current year because he will have approximately forty thousand dollars that will go over into next year. A consideration of a request for a grant approval and acceptance of DOE twenty-four in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars with no matching funds. And a consideration of a request to acknowledge TCRS employer contribution rates effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. There's been no change in the rates. And as far as the amendments, there was an increase in the highway fund by nineteen thousand one hundred dollars to come out of their fund balance for their liability insurance, which has increased. In general purpose school, they're using a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of their fund balance. And then Capital Projects recommended these things and budget committee approved them. It's thirty-one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars for sessions and circuit for key cards and file cabinets and maybe twelve hundred dollars additionally to the senior center for a security system and a panic button system. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks, Andrew.